I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the dear symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
And I'd be pleased to hear the invocation from Commissioner Carlson.
Please bow your heads. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for substance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedoms of to embrace you and the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you for loathing us even so from our boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established these very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our commission and for the county officials in particular. For this assembly, council, I am asking for your gracious and grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of today, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the confidence in what's good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even though there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy of their task. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who would live and work in our county. In these things I ask, in the Lord's name, amen.
County manager.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning to all who've joined us here this morning. We'll start with any public comments. I haven't received any written public comments. Are there public comments from the audience this morning? Seeing none, we'll move to the service awards portion of the agenda. I think all but one are here with us this morning. The first one, Mr. Benny Eaton from Public Works, isn't here this morning, but we'd like to recognize him. Fifteen years of service for the county. Next, we have Mr. Santiago Garcia from Facilities with fifteen years. Next is Mr. Daniel Carcer from the Sheriff's Office, ten years. And next is Jose Barasa from Detention, ten years. Five individuals, sixty years of service, that's pretty outstanding. So, one more round of applause for everybody. You want to do a group photo with the commission? Yeah, just a short break and get a group photo for everybody. The next item on the agenda, we need to open a public hearing to consider the Arbor Estates' preliminary plat.
Entertained a motion that we open the hearing to approve the Arbor Estates' preliminary plat. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
All righty. The next item on the agenda, we need to open a public hearing to consider the Arbor Estates' preliminary plat.
Entertained a motion that we open the hearing to approve the Arbor Estates' preliminary plat. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we need to adjourn the hearing.
Entertained a motion that we adjourn the hearing.
Salute.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
All right. Mr. McCroskey.
Morning Commissioners. This is just a preliminary plat approval of the Arbor Estates subdivision. This has been through the Planning and Development Advisory Committee with their recommendation to move forward to you all for approval. The subdivision is located on Thirteenth Street between US 285 and Jackson, west side of the road. For the highlights of the subdivision, it's on a larger parcel of land. They're developing twelve one-acre lots, give or take a little bit on each lot. All lots are going to face Thirteenth, front on Thirteenth Street. There's not going to be any improvements that you guys are going to have to approve for maintenance or adoption by the county. Water is going to be supplied by Cottonwood Rural. They have given notice that they have plenty of water. Reviews have gone through all the applicable agencies with no negative comments. The only question from the Environment Department came out of Las Cruces with not really a negative comment, but they did have some questions on liquid waste and the percolation rates of the soil in the area. I didn't feel that it was any great concern. We have several other subdivisions in the immediate area that have not presented any issues. There are no wells within the immediate area that would be of any, have any impact on those wells with the liquid waste systems. I think that we're good to go on this and ready to move forward with it on the approval. And, I had one more thing, I didn't get any public comment from anybody.
Are there any public comments in the audience? Having none, Commissioners, I'll ask some questions.
Do you have any comments from any people in Artesia?
No, sir, I sure didn't.
I got one question. Why do we have to approve this? Not that I'm, I'm just wondering why we have to go through the process because doesn't, because as long as you're one acre, you can put a sewer out there. I mean, this is just a development, but...
It's a development. It's a type, it's a full type three subdivision. And we have type one, two, three, four, five subdivisions. The summary subdivisions do not have to come before you all for approval, but the full type three subdivisions, type twos, type ones, type fours, those have to come before you all for the approval by ordinance.
That's just drafted in?
And I believe by statute as well.
Okay. All right. Well, I just was, I thought, well, shoot, it probably meets all the deals and it goes through, it passes the NMD spec. And NMD, I don't even know why they'd be asking questions because it fits within all the parameters of...
Right. No, it does. It was, he just had some thoughts on the percolation rates. They can, you can work around those by adding different...
Sewer designs.
This will also be followed up, once they get the development completed, it'll be followed up with a final plat that'll have to come before you all for approval as well, which will basically serve as the as-built.
Mr. County Attorney, any...
No questions.
Start skipping over your cast.
Just how I am. Life is with me.
Not used to you being here, so we just kind of... I used to having to follow any rules, but now you're...
Just like his dad.
Miss one, miss one deal.
I missed the cannabis one. I get picked on.
Entertained a motion to approve the Arbor Estates' preliminary plat.
So moved.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we need to adjourn the hearing.
Entertained a motion that we adjourn the hearing.
Salute.
Thank you.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
All right. Next, we'll need to open a public hearing on Ordinance 21-109, Eddy County Fire Code.
Entertained a motion that we open that hearing.
So moved.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
All right. Next, we'll need to open a public hearing on Ordinance 21-109, Eddy County Fire Code.
Entertained a motion that we open that hearing.
So moved.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. We have Chief Mack and Mr. Zinnaga here. Share with the commission and the ordinance.
Good morning Chairman Commissioners, this is the ordinance, I think we've discussed several times, of adopting fire code in Eddy County. We're looking to adopt the same fire code that's currently in effect for the state of New Mexico. This would just bring the oversight and regulation of that to the county government level, which would allow us to do the inspections at our level instead of having to wait on the state. This would give us increased, Chief Mack and I were just looking at ISO, which is a big, big thing on people's insurance rates. The county adopting fire code is worth forty points of our overall. Just by adopting it, we automatically gain forty points. Now, in a big spectrum, but forty points counts quite a bit in the full spectrum. So, just adopting it does give us that kind of an overview for a need for it. I walked into, spent an hour last week and I walked into three businesses. Of those three businesses, all three had visible code violations, two were major life safety codes. So, at the current, without us having the regulation, we can't enforce those, we can't change them. I just talked to them, said, here's the, here's, here's what's wrong, here's how to fix it. And ultimately, that's what we want to do, is just educate them. If they weren't willing to make those corrections, right now, there's no way for us to do anything about that. We could call the state and say, hey, these are major life safety code violations that affect our citizens. When you get around to it, please come protect our citizens. Where if it's, if it's our code, we can take care of that immediately.
Have you received any public comment?
I have none.
I haven't either.
Is there any public comment in the audience? None from county, all right. See none in the, in the audience, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. County Attorney, any comments on your...
We've worked on this and I think it's a good thing to put in place.
What about commission comments?
I agree. I think, I think that it's great anytime that we can work with the public and provide, you know, information and help to them locally, I think it's a good thing, so thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions, and you answered one already. So, this is basically, you took state statute and made it ours.
Correct. This, this is the ICC 2015 is what the state is already has adopted, that is what we're using.
And for the fire marshal, who is the fire marshal?
Technically, I am. By my job description, when you guys created my job description, I am the fire marshal.
Are you the only one enforcing this, or could Josh, I mean...
The way the ordinance is written, it's, I can delegate authority. So, really, everybody within the fire admin office would be able to, to help with this. So, it wouldn't just, ultimately, the ordinance reads myself, but anybody that is delegated to. So, it would really be our entire office.
And then, the fines that y'all can issue, is redo that, is that from the state as well, or did we make those numbers up?
We're actually a little bit lower than the state. We're, the state, we use several people's ordinances to put ours together, and that's the low amounts. And honestly, fines are not something we're looking to, I mean, public education is what we're looking to. The fine is only if we cannot get the plans.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have, thank you.
I like what you said about using, so many times we adopt regulations and ordinances that become a tool of punitive, and I would like to see this used as a teaching rather than used as something punitive on our, on our businesses and stuff.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, what we're worried about is the citizen's safety. And so, that, we want to be able to go out and educate and make our citizens safe. The enforcement is only as a last resort, that we cannot get the business owner to make the citizens safe.
I'd like to see us keep that stance.
Yes, sir. I agree. I like the education. I'm always afraid of unintended consequences somewhere down the road. But, I'm curious, what are the nature of out-of-compliance situations that you have observed, expect to observe?
I'm not going to name businesses. The ones I walked into last week, one was a fire alarm out of service, so it is a establishment that has a lot of businesses coming in and out. Soon as I walked in, I could hear the alarm making noise, it was out of service, sensors hanging open, things like that. One of the other ones has a lot of people coming in and out, three emergency exits, all three were blocked, one with a machine that couldn't be used, one that was padlocked, and one that had stuff in front of it, inside and outside.
Pretty dangerous, routine careless kind of situations.
And it's just, it's, like I said, it's an education, and like I talked with the business owners, it's, employees don't know that stuff, it's hard to, to keep employees. So, that's our thing, is to walk in and just educate and show them why those violations are such a big deal.
Let me, I'm sorry, I interrupted. I, I just was wondering if we could, could put together a pamphlet that kind of outlined...
That would be my plan. And like I said, as we, as we go and do these inspections, we would provide them a written report that not only says what they were, but here's what the code says that it should be, and here's why this is so important. But, yes, and we can get nationally available pamphlets also that kind of overview the key life safety issues, like extinguishers, alarms, exits, that type.
Because I'd like to see that passed out to our businesses, just so they know what they need to be doing.
Yes, sir.
You know, not everybody's first on what is the code.
Right. Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions. What are the total, total ISO points? You said we've increased forty, is it four hundred points or eight hundred or...
There's forty points possible, it breaks down into different parts. Ten points of it is just having the fire code and having it within five years of the most recent addition. But then, it's also public education, prevention, so going out, doing the inspections, having the drawings of the buildings, showing...
But what are the total points allotted to the county?
Total points?
Ballparking?
So, I think there's a hundred and, I think there's a hundred and ten points, but it breaks out into five or six different sections.
So, this could have a significant impact on ISO?
Yes.
This is, this is not a, this is not a two percent increase?
No.
This could be a significant...
This could bump us up a whole classification.
Okay.
If we maintained what we already have, we could gain enough points to bump us up an additional classification.
I like that, I think that's good information. Is there any, I assume you're doing new building inspections, things like that, for new construction?
We will be if this is adopted, yes. And we're currently looking at some plans on businesses that are trying to be built just as an education, but at this point, we don't have the authority to be involved in that process.
Okay. Is there, after we approve this, you will have the authority, is that what you're telling?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, is there an MOU with the city of Carlsbad at all, so you guys can, can help each other out, or are you just strictly doing county and things that are outside the five-mile radius of Carlsbad and Artesia?
At this point, we would only do county unless the city requested. Now, with Artesia, I've helped them with a few, we partnered on a few, and we would be willing to do that if they requested. The ordinance technically only gives us the authority in the county unless the city asks for our help, because both cities already have their own fire code.
So, with the, the MOUs for mutual aid that we had from Fire Board for the two cities, would that cover fire marshal responsibilities or no?
They could. I mean, it's not directly addressed in the MOU, but I mean, we could always modify it.
We do have mutual aid MOUs with both sides.
And it would kind of go back to Commissioner Henry's question, is where the authority comes from. So, if the, the city fire marshal from either code asked specifically for us to enforce under their code, they would have the authority to do that.
Which is also under the state, the same state code that everybody's following.
Right.
Okay. What about the, what about the plan submission process? So, say I'm going to build a building in the county, I have to submit my mechanical plans to CID, you know, whatever foundation plans, whatever, whatever. Do I now submit the fire suppression plans to Eddy County, or does that still go to the state for their approval, and you just do the inspection?
No, it would be approved by us at the county level. And our plan is to do electronic plans, that way we can, instead of paper plans, having to make changes, send them back and forth, we'll do electronic plans, which, I don't know if everybody knows what a huge deal that is, like to keep, to keep business going, that is one of the, one of the biggest holdups that you have is, for new construction in Eddy County, is waiting on the state fire marshal's office. So, I, that will be, that will be a huge boon to the, to the businesses and the citizens to get things approved quickly and keep them working and keep things going, so.
So, in that sense, will you interact with the state fire marshal's office and say, any businesses from Eddy County that you currently have in the queue, will you send them here and we'll, we'll address them?
Yes, sir. Once this is adopted, we'll get with them and let them know that, that once this takes effect, we'll be able to handle all of that. And like I said, it's, we'll still work together, but, but ultimately, we will handle that.
But, but in the future, then, if, if something gets there to the state inadvertently, they would know, send it down, we'll take care of it?
Correct, yes, sir.
And in the same vein, as Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Carlson, we are just taking the state statute and making them where we can streamline the process. It's not punitive enforcement, it is, it is specific, it's what we're already doing already. We're just speeding the process up by, it could be months in some cases. So, we appreciate the, we appreciate fire services going out and doing, appreciate you being, being willing to take your time and resources to go and review plans and approve those and give those to you and make sure that, you know, make sure that, make sure that everything's approved and we can, we can move forward. Appreciate it, appreciate your interest. Any further questions or comments? Okay. We will entertain a motion that we approve Ordinance 21-101, Eddy County Fire Code.
Make that motion.
Second.
Did I say 101? I'm sorry. Excuse me. Ordinance 21-109, Fire Code.
I'm in my motion, uh, motion.
Cast, we gotta, we gotta really stay on our toes, so, okay. Have a motion and a second, don't we?
Yes, second.
Okay. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you gentlemen. Thank you Commissioners.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, we have a presentation update on the approval, disapproval of the Eddy County Affordable Housing Plan. Mr. McCroskey?
Morning again Commissioners. I have Mr. Ty Nagel here with me from Wilson and Company. This is just going to be a short presentation by Mr. Nagel on our Affordable Housing Plan update. In this 2021 update, we try to keep this updated every five years to go along with our comprehensive plan. Last year, Wilson and Company did this very same thing for the city of Carlsbad, so they were able to use a lot of the data they had gathered there to move forward into our plan.
Share with them the purpose for having the plan.
I'm, I'm still trying to get myself completely aligned with the purpose for the housing plan. It'll help us ultimately with CDBG grants and other state and federal grants. It also allows the ability for us to help developers through these grants to develop affordable housing. They have to meet certain criteria through the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority in order to be able to qualify for this as a developer. But, these are the things that, that this plan helps to lay out, pricing, aspects and so forth for the affordable housing that they can qualify to help.
So, sort of along the lines of having the extra forty points in the ISO discussion that we just talked about with the adopting and state regulation. So, adding this plan in place locally affords the county opportunities, and when certain grants are applied, so the question is, do you have your updated affordable housing? And then, when builders and developers look to those opportunities for funds and grants, they can also leverage this updated plan. So, that's the purpose for keeping it relatively current.
Yeah, and I believe it is a state requirement as well from the New Mortgage, Mortgage Finance, New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority, to be able to receive funding as well. So, it's a great tool to, you know, talk to a developer and say, here's Artesia, here's Carlsbad, here's Eddy County, you have some incorporated data in here as well, and not to say that it's, you know, competitive, but you kind of have the ability to show that you have more of a need than somewhere else, get the projects kind of where you want them.
So, this is a summary of the work that's been done?
Yeah. Steve asked me to try to squeeze a hundred pages into ten minutes and a handful of slides, so bear with me, I'm trying to keep it conceptual, but I understand we need some data to kind of make all this make sense, so, I'm trying to kind of get most of this. This is the update to the 2015 plan. So, with that, the executive summary kind of starts both of these documents and kind of really all the ones that are done statewide, so I'll, I'll start with that instead of hitting you with a bunch of data that you're having, you know, trouble trying to follow. So, this will kind of lay the groundwork, and then I'll show how that data kind of is used to how all this makes sense. So, just in general, a population estimate update from the 2015 plan to now, we have about fifty-seven thousand residents. However, as we all know, with the oil and gas workers, the census does not count them as residents, so the true number based on water usage and everything could be as high as a hundred thousand in the county. Nearly twenty-two hundred housing units have been added since January of 2015. That, that information has been provided by the city of Carlsbad, the city of Artesia, and then some limited development information from Eddy County and unincorporated areas. The average housing price has rose from 185 to 258 in the last five years, an increase of thirty-nine percent. Median rental rates went from 775 up to 942. And keep in mind, all this data is 2020, so the census kind of, you know, has that lag on collecting it all and getting it out, so these, they've used that, so they haven't really accounted for the inflation that we're seeing currently. However, we did do a market analysis that was done this summer, so that'll, that'll be included in all that we'll see as well. Subset of units, roughly six hundred throughout the county's eleven properties. All of those do still have a waiting list of one... Um, subsedded units roughly six hundred throughout the county's eleven properties. Um, all of those do still have a waiting list of one to three years, so nothing has changed throughout the twenty fifteen plan for the county, twenty fifteen plan for, um, Artesia and Carlsbad, so those wait lists are still, um, are still here. Um, living quarters, so this is where we kind of took a look at, uh, on the map information that kind of tracks where people live and where they work, and found that twenty-five percent of people employed within the county are living outside of the county. We have some other data to share with you on that as well later in the presentation. Um, through our stakeholder committee and online job searches, we found roughly a total of thirty-six full-time jobs, um, that were available, um, f- again, through the kind of pandemic where people were on a hiring freeze. Um, a total of hundred and ni- hundred and ninety-nine active listings for vacant land with an average price per acre of sixty-eight thousand. However, there were some kind of outliers, um, that we'll see that didn't quite, uh, make sense to throw into the mix, so we'll, we'll, we'll pull those out and kind of give you a quick example of that. And then we're, we're, we're gonna look at renters and homeowners in different categories based on the state's area median income, which is AMI. Um, and it's basically, uh, cost burdened, um, which would be the thirty percent and forty percent of those making, or those making thirty and forty percent of the state's area median income. Um, and then there's the fifty to sixty percent level, which would be considered the workforce needs, so we're kind of look at their housing needs particularly, and then market rate, which would be up, up to a hundred percent of the AMI, which is basically saying you're, you're making the area median income, which is seventy thousand, seven hundred. And these, these figures are presented by the New Mexico Mortgage, uh, Finance Authority, so that's something that is kind of used to help keep an even playing field for all the, um, plans that are done. So this will consider the comp plan from Eddie County in twenty seventeen, uh, the city of Artesia's recent housing plan in twenty twenty, as well as the city of Carlsbad's, uh, affordable housing plan, which Steve mentioned Wilson and Company completed. So there's some good data from all that that we'll use to kind of help make this plan a little better. So digging into some of the data to see how things stack up, population increased almost four percent, um. Population increased about four percent over the last five years. Um, however, the total number of housing units increased six percent, so you think supply and demand, that's good, things are gonna go down, right? Median household income also went up from fifty-seven thousand about to sixty-five thousand, so a fifteen percent increase. However, the median rental rates went up almost twenty-four percent. So not exactly what we would have expected to see there. Um, occupied housing units went down, so these, this is kind of the basis of what we're looking at for, you know, things are kind of all going in the right direction, however, occupancy rates went down, so you think that would drive prices down as well. Um, and this is kind of just a breakdown of showing the vacancies by all of Eddie County, Carlsbad, and then the unincorporated area was, actually had fewer vacancies, so, uh, there's limited housing options there. And then this is the on the map that kind of shows that of the thirty thousand employed in Eddie County, only nineteen thousand live and work in Eddie County, almost eleven thousand are commuting into Eddie County to work, and then about seven thousand residents of Eddie County are working outside of the county. So I know there was a, a big issue with, um, you know, when we first started this study, there were reports of, or news, news clippings of people from McDonald's needing to be shuttled in to work because they can't live in the area, you know, trouble driving in, so this is just a good data point to kind of show that. And then how this stacks up to twenty fifteen, um, so people employed in the area and living outside, that went from seven thousand to ten thousand, so that's not really the direction we wanted to see. More people are living outside of Eddie County that work there. Um, you can just see some of the other, uh, data points and kind of how they stack up. Pretty much everything has a, a shift up, which kind of makes sense because we have more, uh, workers up from thirty thousand up from twenty-four thousand, but where it's different is kind of what we want to see, so that fifty percent is kind of the high, high point from these. Um, total housing units for the county between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty was about two thousand, two hundred, and this just shows by year and kind of by city where that was, where that was completed, just to give you a snapshot. And then, so we looked at the rental market, this is where we see, you know, exactly kind of what was completed since, between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. And to summarize this, the majority of what you're seeing is that the cheaper apartment units, um, there, there was less of in the housing stock, and then that more expensive units, there's more of for the house, for the percent of housing stock. So that's not really the direction we want to see this going, um, either, but since the two plans, there were, really wasn't a whole bunch of affordable units added to the market, so makes sense why we're seeing this. This is just a breakdown of the Mortgage Finance Authority's AMI chart, we can skip that for now unless you have questions. Um, and then the average, mainly we're two-bedroom, uh, for rent, which is good, however, when you start to look at this, you see that the, of, the rental market, the majority of things available are above nine hundred and fifty dollars, so that's not a very good, um, you know, we need more affordable units is basically what this is saying. The market, um, does not have cheap units right now. And this is kind of used to understand what we consider cost-burdened, um, residents, so those spending more than thirty percent of their monthly income is considered cost-burdened. So this takes a look at a, a two-person household. So a, a two-person household, which would be a one-bedroom, or a three-person household, which is a two-bedroom, someone in the thirty percent AMI category, spending thirty percent of their monthly income is overpaying by a thousand dollars. So that's how we understand the gap, and what we can go to the Mortgage Finance Authority and say, these are the housing credits that we need. Um, so this kind of helps outline that, and you don't see assistance needed until you get to the hundred percent AMI, which is basically someone making, um, you know, average income. Um, and that's kind of what that little slash that you see from the red is, so we'll do that for the housing as well. But that just kind of tells us that, you know, of the entire rental market, thirty-two percent of people in Eddie County are cost-burdened, so that's seventeen hundred and fifty households. So that alone can be used to say we need at least seven hundred, seventeen hundred and fifty more, uh, units that are more affordable. As far as the housing stock goes, we're seeing the same thing with, um, the lower end of housing, uh, in this case, a hundred and fifty thousand and less, there's fewer available. Uh, two hundred thousand and more, there's more of those in the housing stock, so again, that shift is kind of increasing for the housing market as well as the rental market. Um, throughout the years, this, this information, uh, comes from the Realtors Association, kind of shows us the average house price increase as well as units sold per year going roughly six, five hundred, seven hundred, um, so that kind of fluctuates, um, a little haphazardly, or off and on, every other year it's high and then the next year it's low. So so far this year, we're kind of on track to be at about six hundred homes sold, and obviously this data point, uh, two twenty-five is lower likely because of the pandemic and, uh, uh, realtor market. Real estate market in the winter is always lower, so, um, that's kind of what we're seeing there. And then this just takes a look at the average price of a home, um, throughout the years slowly increasing, and we can hold on to this, but this is basically the AMI category that shows the entire population broken down by, um, that AMI count, whether you're making a hundred percent of the area median income. Um, so that's probably a little too detailed for now, but, um, and then the previous study looked at unincorporated Eddie County versus, um, all of Eddie County, however, there were only, um, about thirteen listings in unincorporated, so, uh, in one of our first stakeholder meetings, we, we decided to use all of Eddie County's data points, so that includes two hundred and ninety-four listings, which was all extrapolated through an Excel sheet to understand price by, um, uh, number of bedrooms, and the majority of those being Carlsbad with two hundred. Um, and this is kind of one of those examples that we removed because it would really shift all of our numbers when trying to understand the rental and housing market. So a half a million dollar farm condominium, what they wanted to call it, but essentially it was a trailer on a few acres, so, um, you know, that's something that we kind of pulled from the stat because it didn't really tell the story that the rest of the market was kind of giving us. So this just shows the limited listings in unincorporated versus all of Eddie County. And again, we're seeing the, the majority of the stock is within this middle target, which puts us of, uh, puts us at about a hundred and ten thousand dollars and above for houses up to two twenty-three. Um, but again, only thirteen homes available in that one hundred and eleven thousand to one hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, so a pretty limited, limited stock for the lower income, and then obviously the, you know, nine, five, and four for, uh, hun- under a hundred and ten thousand. This is the same chart, um, that the Mortgage Finance Authority would use to understand down payment assistance, so the gap here for a two-person household or a one-bedroom home, um, which there were very few of, uh, was about thirty-three thousand if those people only spent thirty percent of their monthly income. So the goal for the Mortgage Finance Authority is to, you know, get everyone to that thirty percent of your monthly income, so this chart is, shows some high numbers, but, um, that just, you know, gives you the full spectrum, not everyone earning thirty thousand dollars is trying to buy a three hundred and forty-four thousand dollar house, so, um, it's just a, a full chart to take a look at everything. And then that also is used to understand that twelve point six percent of homeowners in Eddie County are cost-burdened, so they're spending more than thirty percent, so far less than the rental market. Um, the plan also took into consideration, uh, water and land, um, availability, so the B, uh, BLM chart here, or map of the BLM land, um, was used along with these, um, uh, the excessive slopes, water, um, from, uh, water availability, and then the flooding from all the flood plains, so that was taken into consideration, um, as well as the map to show all the oil and gas wells and, um, I believe it's called salt injections. So, um, we also pulled some data that showed, showed the man camps, but it, it, it's kind of hard to really classify them as that, so this really just shows where there are complaints in the county for, um, liquid waste, uh, disposal at grade, so that's what we're seeing in a lot of the man camps is that their plumbing is just kind of at grade and meant to kind of disperse throughout the property, so there's a, you can see a handful of those from the map. And then this is where we see the land availability, unincorporated Eddie County.
We, we've eliminated probably ninety-eight percent of that problem. There are still illegal locations out there that we're still coming across and dealing with. But as far, as far as the liquid waste goes, it's about ninety-eight percent.
Is that, this is a, this should be an extra conception?
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, the, so the plan did kind of take all that stuff into consideration. Um, obviously, the next step would be looking at actual development sites and kind of how that would look for, um, you know, a cost basis, based on land, based on construction, obviously that has, uh, changed drastically in the last six months, so. Uh, there were some estimates in the report that kind of took a look at how some conceptual developments would, would go for different complexes and single-family homes, so, uh, I guess with that, I'll kind of in, in there and see if there's any questions.
Questions or comments?
So it, it does seem like there's quite a bit of disparity with income and, or health and availability, you know, to afford health. Where does this information go from here?
Yeah, so this information is used, um, to either get income assistance from the Mortgage Finance Authority, um, or down payment assistance on homes. It also kind of tells you that, um, there's a large gap and that, that you can work with developers to get, uh, a low-income, um, project built, or affordable complex built. Um, so that's something that you do through the Mortgage Finance Authority as well, to kind of help get developer credits for that. Um, the end of the document also lays out all of these different options and kind of contact points, websites, who to talk to, um, but I think really the next step would be to, you know, work with developers because even from the previous study, thirteen hundred more units were built prior to the twenty fifteen, but the problem when it got worse, so the development is happening, but it's just the higher-end stuff because that's what people are paying. Uh, I even talked to a, a group of guys last night, um, in the oil and gas industry, and they'd been living in Stevens Inn for three years because they're just like, I just don't want to buy anything, I don't need to, I can just come and stay here, so, um, you know, it, should we throw those guys into the mix too? That, that would probably increase the market, supply and demand, obviously, so, um, you know, getting the low-income housing for the residents, for the workforce is kind of the goal of this document, so I think working with the MFA and developers will be, uh, probably first key, key words.
Do we have any developers that are, you know, in the fourteen, uh, as well, that are, that are, you know?
Problem is, uh, site availability and, uh, you know, the problem. There's a real disparity in where and how these units are constructed. You know, there are some new units that are, and most of it's in the city, right? There's, there's very much unincorporated, uh, there are several new complexes in the city of Carlsbad, several on the south side, several, uh, probably a couple hundred units all in total that are under construction or near completion. Prior to the pandemic, basically, you had Copperstone, what do they call it, the review estates, but since then, there've been two or three more complexes, but, um, they've, they've done in phases, some units are completed and other units are under construction, but, um, I would, my suspicion is those rents aren't in those first two categories, there, those rents would be in mid to upper categories, which is, they're, they're still testing what the market will bear. So there has to be a, my opinion, well, not the analyst, but my opinion, a balancing of demand and supply, um, to, 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 to date, the supply has not met, uh, the demand, and so unit rates are up. As supply begins to erode the demand, then, then those, those, uh, rates will ultimately drop, but even in some of the more established, uh, former units within the city, those, those rents haven't changed appreci- they, they come down some, but, um, so it's the population that can afford them. Finding, finding more of those units are, it's, it's a real, it's a real balance from my perspective, and then the, within the county, the subsidized unit availability is exceptional, not, rather, to begin your presentation, eleven or twelve, you know, this is not very many, and, uh, so that's, uh, but again, you have to have somebody that's willing to, to work within the, the guidelines from the state that help subsidize that, and then make them available to the renters, and so. Uh, any developers are in that business today, I guess.
It's, it, it is a lot more paperwork and wait times and, you know, so it is, uh, a lot, a few more hurdles, definitely.
So within Eddie County, not just, we, none of the cities, all county have determined to be engaged in that, to do that. I don't know if there are other counties across the state of New Mexico choose to do that. I'm not aware of any, they might be into more urban areas, but I don't know for a fact.
Yeah, I know the, um, Mortgage Finance Authority just kicked off this summer their statewide affordable housing plan, so that might end up providing more guidance in terms of how the climate is in Eddie County versus, you know, around the state, so that, that might give you some more direction as well. Or maybe it might say where the, uh, MFA wants to focus their efforts, you know, maybe it is the more urbanized areas or outside of them, like Albuquerque.
Well, I, but we're referencing like apartments, not like homes, you know, some, like, 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 you know, it's.
Homes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess, I, I guess I do jump to apartments, but, yeah, they kind of. Yeah, and I guess, I, I guess I do jump to apartments, but yeah, it kinda works the same way for housing. Um you know, if you would, you know, get them or the, the uh down payment assistance from the MFA, uh or you can work with them to do tax credits, um tax abatements. You know, I've, I've heard of a lot of those, if we're even reinvesting into your property a certain, certain amount to where it uh is a ten-year tax abatement and it's transferable if you sell it, so it's kinda a way to build equity as well. Um so just a few different routes for housing.
I would, I would really like if our efforts, you know, as the commission focused on you know, within Eddie County. Um I think that there's a lot of data out there that supports the, one of the best ways that you can pawn that generational property, like a and paying off that home, selling it, passing it on to children, it's a, it's, it's important. And I think we can all agree that if someone's looking to find a place to live here instead and that would, it, it'd hide more people money to buy homes, it would very really benefit our community. So I think that that's something that we should focus.
I have a couple of good questions, and maybe it's just 'cause I, I'm being direct to it, but you had said thirty thousand workers in the county, is that right? Is that the number you said, thirty-six thousand?
Well, the workforce, this was provided by on the map, which, which did say uh thirty thousand employed in Eddie County.
So where was the eleven thousand?
They're coming from outside of the county.
So within our county, we're saying like nineteen thousand people have jobs in it, is that what I'm hearing?
No, live and, live and work in Eddie.
Live and work?
Yeah, so um eleven thousand live outside of Eddie County but work inside, so that's about, you know, a third of your people employed. That's a pretty high percentage of people that um, you know, don't live kinda near their, their personal work.
So in a county of fifty-eight thousand people. That's why I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding, so help me break that down. In a county of fifty-eight thousand, where's everyone work? Are they all even in the county?
No.
That population, the workforce is probably forty percent of the total population. When you consider how many individuals work, so you, it's about twenty, twenty-five percent of the population is youth. By just looking at the DOH statistics of the local actuaries and all, so you take that out and then you have um some spouses that don't work, they're kind of family, whatever, um then you have the retirees.
The what was Eddie County's unemployment rate, pretty good, didn't?
Three point six percent, it's six point three percent today.
So those numbers still don't, I don't understand where those, I guess I just can't grasp. Well, and I don't wanna take up too much time, but at some point, maybe soon, we understand, have a population of almost fifty-nine, a workforce of thirty, eleven thousand coming from outside, that leaves a population of nineteen thousand working for that third, right, that live and work in the county.
Yeah, within seven thousand worker, seven thousand residents of Eddie County are also.
Leaving, or somewhere else. Twenty-five, twenty-six thousand?
Well, they wouldn't be counted as, they wouldn't be a part of that thirty thousand employed in the area. That's basically saying, so, so by what you're looking at, saying that there's fifty-nine thousand residents and you have thirty thousand seven thousand of those eligible employees are working elsewhere, so that fifty-nine now becomes fifty-two. So thirty thousand out of fifty-two thousand, and that levels.
We have twenty.
It's really a twenty thousand, fifty-two thousand.
If you take out the, the youth retirees, your eligible workforce is.
So that makes sense, in my brain, I could make a job, so that's what I needed to. Now, on, on the next part of this, to kind of to Commissioner Cordova's point, is, is with the housing. I a hundred percent agree with that, hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes don't exist anymore, they're not possible. Um currently, unfortunately, in, in Eddie County, and I don't know what y'all's lock price is up here, but on an average lock price of forty thousand dollars just to start to build a home, builders aren't gonna do that. And I know that our county is really close to us, um and the city is very close to us, we have homes, I won't say them, but uh they're doing a great job of incentivizing builders and, and, and so, does that help this problem? Or is this just to get affordable? Which then you gotta work and everything else, that really doesn't help us get homes to solve the problem, because if you gotta go through this support and care to build, it's almost impossible, is that, am I right?
Well, it's also um possible to kinda use these numbers to show developers that, hey, there is this huge market of people trying to buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. So if, you know, if you have a way to make that work, you know, I'm not a home builder, I, I did do construction in high school, but I'm not a home builder, I haven't seen their financial sheets. But it kinda does give you the data to say that the demand is there. You know, if you guys can work with lot sizes, work with square footages, anything like that, that's maybe where, you know, your.
Your square footage would be eight hundred and sixty-six.
Yeah.
At their current prices, so you, you could, you could, their prices would help, but you're around like a need to, for a hundred and thirty thousand is kinda where your percentage probably was in there. You'd get up eight hundred and sixty-six square feet of a house, so.
And I think that's my point, I mean, with, with lumber prices, with like with wire prices, with everything that's so inflated and the lock price is already starting out high, unless we incentivize builders, which some of these other counties and cities, they hope they're doing a great job of doing, uh to help those come in and drive that lock price down, so that the builders actually have a chance to. Cause right now, you're, you're not gonna make, you're gonna lose money. And it's hard to go to developers and say, hey, who wants you to do this project? There is a sweet spot, cause I think we all a hundred percent agree. You can lose some money for us and build some. So how do we, how do we use this to actually, cause I think this is great information and it shows exactly what you're saying, doesn't what we wanted to, but it doesn't really help us because to get through this paperwork, it might help us to build some more facilities and things, which are great. Nothing, but I'm with you. I would like to see homes where people actually have a stake in it, and I don't see that hap-
I think in the last three years, or four years, probably go back down, there has, there was an effort to try and approach that concern. Eddie County doesn't, we don't have any infrastructure other than growth, right? We don't have power, we don't have water, we don't have sewer. Um and the model here has been that cities provide that infrastructure and that model has been that the builder fronts that infrastructure cost. And that's one of the differences, I think, that you're talking about, so. Having passed that on one of those commissions or committees to help try and do that, the builders could afford to front that money and, and be a full-profit business. And the ability to change the model is not, well, we weren't successful changing the model um rel- relative to having an infrastructure put in by the owner of the structure and then improving that cost through the.
Water, electricity?
Sure.
Which is, I mean, you're gonna know what it means, but to do that, I mean, you're like, that is a dollar to get, to get. And so that, I think that until we fix that, this problem is gonna just continue to grow because there's nothing but more inflation on the cost of goods to build on.
The, the other, other avenue is on available land within infrastructure. But that's not an at-scale opportunity, it's a one to two thing. We go build a new house on this side, or here's a vacant here. So there are, I think, cities have identified maybe tens, maybe twenties of those individual, but they still require some prep work, you have to acquire and then remove a dilapidated uh structure or fund something that's adjacent to an existing property and convince the owner to, to sell it. And there, there's a lot of that throughout the, this is the way, the nature of the city. And s- but that's, that's not something a developer's gonna come in, cause unless they can do things at scale, the return on their investment is not sufficient to, to build one house here, one house here, and one house here. Or have enough land and infrastructure to build a fifty-unit apartment complex for median price of X per unit. When we spoke to the developers and, and quite honestly, we all had, don't talk to us, um yeah, they all began a conversation with IMF for profit entity. And right through some, their choice, their business, their monies, um here's a need, are we gonna, are we gonna match that? That, that, that issue had not been resolved, still isn't resolved within our product.
I think if they would resolve that, I mean, we've got great data to prove the point of need, but we have no way to execute. Tell cities it doesn't matter.
If I might, I have to throw this in there, uh to go on with county managers, that I think infrastructure is one of the big holdups for development in unincorporated areas. Or availability for starters, but then if a developer, developer were to come in and look at an apartment complex, how do they, how do they deal with this sort of issue?
I mean, I'm worried, you're at multitudes, everyone's going to sell it, so.
To, to put in your own. Think that maybe just calling you twelve lots up there, which is ridiculous, drive up to a apartment complex with a fully self-contained sewer treatment plant.
And, and.
No, not gonna have an ABD, it's absolutely, can't get past that.
That throws us into newer large rural towns. This, I do have one coming down the road here that's eighty lots. Um but our lots in the county tend to have to be bigger. We can't go with a point-one-nine acre lot because we don't meet the requirements of liquid waste disposal within the county. So they have to make a lot of, anywhere from three-quarters of an acre to one acre for up to a five-bedroom home to, to meet requirements for liquid waste disposal. Then you've got the other side of that water availability, and I know for a fact that, notice, you're gonna have to drill a well, there's no, no memberships available. Really surprised God would ask the water availability this, this next year, I'll be coming down the road, it actually has infrastructure, uh water infrastructure from the city of Maritza. Be available to it, it's immediately adjacent to the city limits, so, you know, that's.
Well, I was, I was, I was great for some water.
Is that water, it's just like, it's a perfect solid heat content, so, I mean, there's that, so.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean.
Really, it's, it's a little bit. Scraped it off with my water faucet, it's almost on a daily basis, you know?
Yes, uh, it is eight hundred and sixty square. It's working, so what is the average square foot price of new construction with the money?
Average selling? Average square foot of home being sold? I think I have that in the presentation, I think I have it in my data sheet, like the hard drive.
Cause I'm just wondering, with the plan, unfortunately, what you're talking about was, with that whole, wasn't inclusive of the decorating, so it's something less than eight hundred and sixty-six.
Yeah, the line is probably.
Yeah. So you're talking about a five hundred square foot house that makes it affordable, you know, uh for the average family to purchase something here. Now, let me ask this question, we said at the very beginning in the presentation, that one of the reasons that we do the, the affordable housing is so that um we qualify for certain grants and stuff that might be used for down payments on homes. Have we explored that?
No, sir, I have not to this point. Um some of that's gonna have to do with the developers wanting to move down that road as well. We've, we've used this data to help acquire CDBG grants and, and.
We might be, we might be better off to have that type of information on and to disseminate to possible developers and uh the people coming into the, to the county that might.
That, sorry to interrupt, um that could be a, an informational piece from the county to, from a potential home buyer to the Mortgage Finance Authority, um because they are able to go straight to them for um the down payment assistance, so that's something that.
But don't you think that would be useful, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we do, we will send this to the Mortgage Finance Authority as well, along with also making it available.
Because if you can't afford a cost of house, you have to figure out some way to subsidize purchasing. Maybe uh that's the, the road that we ought to be walking down.
Excuse me, two major problems. Uh first of all, the available land is a problem, kind of, but the city of Marlton has to build its own sewer system. And uh I think we're gonna do, uh to dissolve the water.
Mr. Maglan, all your sitting here thinking we all hate your guts, we don't. I think it's a very informative report, we're allowed to, or just the messenger, and the director, and the chairman. We appreciate the information very much. I, I agree with Commissioner Cordova in that owning a home is way too circumvent generational poverty, and I think this, this report shows that it is very difficult to, to own a home in Eddie County. There are a lot of things at play, and a lot of things that have driven up the, the cost of home. One Commissioner Beard brought up is, is the federal government BLM lands. You know, that's why Artesia, it's a lot of, and I look in Artesia, it's a lot easier to develop in Lee County, as Commissioner Henry mentioned, because it's all fee simple land, I mean, it's all, it's private land and there's, there's an abundance of that, and when you have an abundance of land, the cost ever lowers down. But we're controlled on the east side by the living desert, we're controlled on the north side by um BLM, on the east side by BLM, and we have a little bit of land we can go to in the south, but that's why the, the cost of, of land is up so high. I i- i- am also gonna echo what um Mr. County Manager said, he says, well, we, we don't, we don't provide any utilities in the county. The only thing we provide is a street. So for us, developing, now, now we need infrastructure, and infrastructure is the number one holdup because you can't go out, if you have, if you have ninety-nine doors, you can do a sewer treatment plant, but if you have a hundred doors, you cannot do a sewer treatment plant. So they, they don't, it's gotta be a, a fully, a fully integrated municipal treatment plant for the sewer. Uh the, the water is a little bit tough, you know, none of the city of Carlsbad has done some to try to take over the Otis water. Uh caught several times in the past, that should, I think that should really happen because the city of Carlsbad has all of the systems in there, they have, they have the water. That area could develop a lot more, and I don't, Commissioner Beard also sits on the, on the uh water boards, I gotta be careful when I say here, here, he may, he may, he may touch me, but.
The infrastructure there, the, the infrastructure there timing is.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a really difficult deal down there, so, you know, anything that the, that the county can do to facilitate um conversations and try to get that to do, but the county is not in the business of supplying water, supplying utilities and things like that. This has been a perfect storm because we have inflation that's, that's happening, and part of that inflation is due to the lack of qualified people, you know, we're six point three percent unemployment. So now we have less qualified people to do the, to do the work, and we're incentivizing those people not to work, so therefore, putting tile in a home has to cost more, and sheet rock and paint and all of those things cost more because we have less people to do the work. So, you know, when we talk about the restrictions on the, on the uh, on the sewer, the water and the utilities, based on the, the rules and regulations of the state of New Mexico, we have a tremendous hindrance, a tremendous hindrance there. Then we have to look at the uh, the people being paid to stay home, and people with great skills, you know, are, are unemployed. And we've had these unemployment benefits that have extended for two years, so that has hurt the supply chain, which now it's hard to get trusses. Trusses are a great thing today, John built houses, I mean, you can't get trusses, that's odd, you know, you think they're everywhere, but you know, to get the labor to put it in, in, in a form that goes on the top of the house, it's just about impossible to do, so the price of that goes up. You know, copper wire that's gone through the roof, we have labor that's in the tank, it's, it, it's, it's really a perfect storm. I agree that we should have. I agree that we should have, that, that people should have the opportunity to own a house. And if we can apply for any grants to put in infrastructure and, and do things like that, that's good. I don't know that the county is the right place to talk about this. That's what we do with, you know, somebody wants to. You know, yeah, they think. Really, to these specs, we don't get them today. And so, if, if there's anything the county can do, I think, in the conversation. I, I, I do not agree with, uh, with. Should, uh, try to, some, or, or instead of, uh, to subsidize the down, the down payment. But I don't, I don't, I just try to get out of the. Home rule, everything, that home rule, so what that allows, what that allows. So, that's what we did, so. I, I figured I had a question, what I was saying is that. So.
And I would think with this, and say, here's why, surely that, that's pretty good evidence to.
Exactly, if we just enlighten them on the situation and what our needs are.
So identifying the opportunity, checking the grant capabilities, confirming with the partner, and then going to the grant door and saying, this is what we'd like to do, I think, I mean, those are all achievable steps. But that's what we'd have to do.
It also makes your grant application way more competitive when it, um, kind of hits all these different checklists of multiple plans. A city plan, a county plan, a statewide plan. It looks like it's been well thought out and that this is what you guys want. Uh, when there's, you know, you're going after a grant and you either, it's not mentioned in a plan or it's just conceptual saying, you know, just cheaper apartments somewhere, you know? So having all these multiple plans does help, so it's not really, you know, arbitrary or anything.
You're right. So for ten minutes, you nailed it. Um, Mr. Chairman, we do need to consider this plan for approval or disapproval.
Okay, Mr. Maglan, we don't hate your guts. Thank you. Uh, we will consider, let's see, I entertain a motion that we approve. The presentation updating approval, uh, for the Eddie County Affordable Housing.
I make a motion, we, we approve it.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. You must have been in a time warp or something, so ten minutes never felt so good. All right. Item number six, I F B R F P bid award, bulk fuel in Missinisia. Uh-oh, back up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioners.
Um, today I'm here for I F B twenty-one thirteen, which is bulk fuel. We solicited this on September twenty-third, and the county did receive two bids that were open on October seventh. After ensuring responsiveness, staff is recommending award go to Brewer Oil for all three locations. With that being said, I'll stand for any questions.
And Jason wasn't able to attend today, but, um, it was a pretty straightforward, easy bid, he was in agreement with it, so.
Commissioner Carlson, any questions?
I just had a curiosity, what kinda per gallon price are?
They are bidding at fourteen cents for diesel and unleaded with a four cent increase in the wintertime. And then for Artisia, they're bidding at eleven with a four cent increase in, uh, wintertime as well.
Are those over rack prices or where?
I mean, yeah, we're not getting eleven cents, it's gotta be over rack, yeah, yeah.
So the, so they'll take them off the rack, whatever the rack price.
Whatever they can buy.
They fluctuate to, and that's their margin on top of the rack price.
Correct.
Yeah.
Versus forty-five cents, that's a big difference.
Wow.
We were at forty-five cents.
That's what the other bid was.
Oh, okay. Wow. Yeah, it was sixty-five cents in Carlsbad.
It's on the, it's on the.
Yeah, it's on the.
There you go.
My goodness, ropes and oil.
Well, they're from Midland, I think is what it said to you.
They got a, they got a yard in town.
They gotta charge you, oh.
Yeah, it depends, depends on the agreement you have at the, with the, with the, at the rack provider. Right, so as feed, feedstock prices fluctuate, your process through the, through the refinery into the rack is, changes.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it fluctuates, when they buy it on spot market, it fluctuates every time.
Depends on what contracts they have in place.
Commissioner Beard, man. Henry, Cordova, all right, no questions. We entertain a motion that we approve the bid award to Brewer Oil for the.
Make that motion.
Bulk fuel. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. All right. Want to move into the trailing agenda, do you need a little one task break, or are we good?
We okay?
Let's go.
All right, trailing agenda. Approve the commission meeting minutes for September twenty-one, twenty twenty.
Any comments, questions? Entertain a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners, next is the commission meeting, approve the commission meeting minutes from, uh, October five, twenty twenty-one.
Questions or comments? Having undertaken a motion that we approve, commission meeting minutes for October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Upstein.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners, next item is, uh, the HIDA drug, uh, task force grant modification number two.
Good morning.
You're not Mr. Leos.
I'll, I'll take the place of Commander Leos today. He's out, uh, busting dopers, so we'll, we'll let him do that and I'll do this stuff. This is basically a, a little over fifty-six thousand that I was able to, uh, leverage at supplemental funding, uh, from HIDA to purchase some vehicles and some other equipment, operating costs, uh, things for the, the, uh, drug task force. So it's a really good deal, saves us from having to use some of our budgeted money, um, for vehicles. So it puts some new vehicles on the road for our task force agents who need them desperately.
Questions or comments for?
Can you get new vehicles?
What's that?
Can you get new vehicles, I mean, I've seen a lot.
We're, we're, actually, uh, we're, we're, they're starting to trickle in now, so. That's nice. Halftime type vehicles, um, you can't get heavy duty ones though.
Thank you for getting this.
Yeah, we need it with the work that's going on down here with the task force.
Well, it's, it's, it's a big benefit to me, you know, being on the HIDA board, on the executive board and being able to see when these things come up. Commander Leos and Bobby Sullivan keep a close eye on the extra money and the connections that I have there help tremendously in getting all these approved.
Thank you Sheriff, entertain a motion that we approve grant modification number two fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Next is, um, the region six drug task force administration grant modification number three, budget adjustment. I suppose you're Mr. Sullivan as well.
I'm nowhere near as attractive as Bobby Sullivan, but I will stand in here and try and do my best. Uh, this is other money that was, uh, we were able to, uh, get from some, uh, and this is actually baseline money, which means it's reoccurring. And Bobby needed it, this for his, uh, his portion of the drug task force, the, the administrative part of it. And he was in desperate need of some, a little plus up on his funding. So that's what this is, it's a little less than five thousand dollars, but it'll go a long way for him. And it's, again, great money for the county.
Questions, comments? Entertaining motion that we approve region six drug task force admin grant modification number three.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
The next item is, uh, set the meeting to approve the canvas of the regular local election held November second, twenty twenty-one for November ninth, twenty twenty-one at eight thirty, Ms. Starlene Russell, county clerk.
Yeah, the election will be November second, and you guys need to certify the results. So, and it has to be done not sooner than six, but no later than ten, so pick a date. So hopefully that will work for everybody, let me know if it doesn't. We have a holiday, I think, two days after that, Veterans Day, so I just tried to pick. And it would only require three of you.
Are we, are there three of us in Carl's, but it can be there that day? I, I can be there, can be there?
Yes.
We gotta, we gotta, you can come to if you want.
I'll stay in Artisia.
It'll take just a few minutes as long.
Five minutes, sorry. Right. It's a Tuesday, if, if you guys.
Week following the commission meeting.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take just a minute.
November ninth at eight thirty.
I thought you had Siri take care of all of that.
I do, but I don't wanna talk to the microphone.
Oh.
Hey Siri, can you put on my calendar for November the ninth at eight thirty A M. to come to commission meeting?
I scheduled your appointment on November.
Nailed it.
Wow.
The appointment is called, come to commission.
Look, I won't forget it now, it's there. Now, now when I don't show up, everybody's gonna judge me.
So you need to approve that, please.
Entertaining motion that we set meeting, uh, to approve canvas of regular local election held November second, twenty twenty-one for November the ninth, eight thirty A M. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item is purchasing firefighting foam using the excise fund, Mr. Mack.
So in the past, we've always put it off on each department individually. We've bought the two aerial trucks, one for Atoka, one for Malaga. So we seem to use more foam in those locations, so those districts are burdened with paying for foam constantly because we're sending those trucks all around the county. So we're just trying to clean things up, bring it in to be one sixty percent purchase. The division chiefs will provide oversight just to make sure that we're not putting thirty totes of foam in everybody's stations.
This is basically bringing it under one umbrella and, and putting the class where they're appropriate.
Just beats buying a foam truck for each station. So, I mean, I think, I think, I think it's great. And, and that foam's super impressive on a petroleum fire or anything like that, it's.
Works great, and we have the, the agreement through the I F Bs.
Entertaining motion that we approve, questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Entertaining motion that we approve this firefighting foam, excise foam, we have a motion and a.
Second.
Second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
There are three app, or three copies of the application, and then each commissioner needs to sign all of each three copies, each of the three copies. All right. While that's going, we'll have Ms. Carroll talk to us about the Darktrace Enterprise Immune System Purchase.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Jason Flores and I are here today to request funding to purchase the Darktrace Enterprise Immune System. A recent Route Fifty article reported that U.S. government agencies and jurisdictions have received nearly two-hundred-and-fifty ransomware attacks in just the past three years. The criminals slip into the network, they encrypt the data, then they demand ransom payment to decrypt the data. It costs roughly fifty billion in recovery cost and productivity cost, that's within three years. You may remember the hacker attack of Colonial Pipeline in May. It was a Russian-linked cybercrime group who compromised their network and demanded a ransom. Colonial Pipeline paid the four-point-four million in Bitcoin to the hackers in exchange for a decryption tool. There were fuel shortages from Alabama to Virginia. The expenses to recover their business were above and beyond the four-point-four that they paid. While Eddy County is not a pipeline company, cyber, a cyber attack could prevent us from paying our bills, from paying our employees, limit our public services and communications. Technology demands now that you communicate through the Internet, which means that people on the Internet all over the world can communicate with you, whether you want them to or not. We of the Eddy County IT Department are focused on protecting the county's diverse network. We use multi-layer solutions and continue to search for new and improved layers of security. We feel that we found a system to enhance our cybersecurity. Darktrace Enterprise Immune System, using their cyber artificial intelligence analyst, learns what is normal on our digital government environment and then reports any anomalies or abnormal activities that then our staff would then review. Their autonomous response technology, named Antigena, is capable of taking swift and targeted action to interrupt attacks such as ransomware posed by cybercriminals and insiders alike, and actually do it within milliseconds before our staff would be able to respond to it. We come to you today requesting that you supply the funding of eighty thousand, six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and thirty cents to purchase the Darktrace system for a one-year subscription. Any questions?
Commissioner Carlson.
Did we go through a bid process or anything of that nature?
We went through sole source. It's set out there on the state. Yes, it was approved before I even put it on the agenda.
And there have, just to clarify, there have been ransomware attacks on local governments within the state of New Mexico. Other counties have been affected, so having another preventative measure will not only protect the county, it may also give us a break on some of our cyber insurance. So I think it's, I think it's value-added.
Can I should give us everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertaining motion that we approve Darktrace Enterprise Immune System Purchase.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll, thank you, Commissioner. Next item is the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda.
It was easy, Cass, because none of us knew anything about it. Okay, sounds good. Yeah, so computers. Okay, got them. Any questions or comments on the resolution or agreement consent agenda as presented? Commissioner Carlson, you're good?
I'm good.
Entertaining motion that we approve the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. In that consent agenda, or was Resolution Twenty-One, One-O-One posing the New Mexico Environmental Department's ozone precursor rules? There are three copies. If you would sign and circle your vote on those copies, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the elected official department head updates. Ms. Darlene?
As we talked about earlier, there is an election going on, early voting, I should say, for the November second election. It's a regular local election. The state, a couple of years ago, combined all of the smaller elections, nonpartisan, into one election, which has been helpful and I think has increased voter turnout. So anybody in Carlsbad will have school board. There are some city members on the ballot. There is soil and water, some watershed boards. There are also some bond and tax questions on there for Artesia. They have a hospital board, but their city, there are no city candidates on there. They will be running in March, but I encourage everybody to go out and vote. Voting is across the alley from our office here, and we've got some new signs up that I think hopefully will help people find where they need to vote. Artesia is in our sub-office there, and our hours during the week are eight to six, and on Saturdays, eight to four, so please get out and vote.
Thank you.
I would just like to remind everyone that we're doing open enrollment on the insurance, and that everybody has to come to the HR department to sign a form saying that you want to keep your insurance the way it is or to change your insurance. We've been doing that for a couple of weeks, and we're still about a hundred and thirty people out, so I'm asking my youth department heads, you have individuals, if you could help us get your beliefs up to HR, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Other updates? All right. Legislative update.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. About the only update I have this morning, I just want to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are on the redistricting committee. Last Friday was the deadline for them to submit and consider maps for consideration for the redistricting. They were tasked with actually reporting or recommending, I'm sorry, three maps for each one of the CD considerations, congressional districts, for the state senate, state house, and Public Education Commission. For those of you who have been in the news and read, they were able to get through the congressional district recommendations, getting a lot of echo here, and also the senate district and the Public Education Commission. The house district considerations will be this afternoon at three o'clock, from three to seven, and so we'll be watching those closely. As you know, the recommendation that the commission made through the process was, the resolution we gave was sent in, and now the process is, is once these maps are adopted, you still have an opportunity online or through writing to express your wishes or displeasure with the, with the decisions that the committee have made for their recommendations on the maps. The special session will be held in December to adopt whichever map the session decides to adopt in each one of those categories that I just mentioned. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Do you have any indication as to how it's leaning?
As far as the maps go, there's the three recommendations, of course, that were made for the redistricting. You can kind of watch the votes. This is a nonpartisan commission, supposed to be, I'll stress that. But at the same time, those three different maps are from one end of the spectrum to the other, so it will basically give the legislature the opportunity to pick what they want to pick and how that will look. I can tell you in the, the map that Eddy County recommended for the congressional district was Map G, as in George, and the representative on there, Caganlosi, had brought that up for consideration, and they turned it down. They did adopt the Map C, let me get it right here, the Map Concept A, which is close to the original as we had before for that congressional district. So that one is under consideration, but at the same time, Map H, which is a very radical map, and, and just it splits up nine counties, splits two different cities up three different ways, it is also out there for consideration. So those, those, that's what I'm saying, and I'm gonna qualify that.
It has an effect on southeastern Mexico.
A huge effect on southeastern Mexico. It splits halves three ways, but what I'm saying is, is as I mentioned before, there is a drastic selection there between one as the norm and one as the extreme, and it was very interesting to listen to the debate, which in the committee said that New Mexico has been status quo for so many years, we probably need to make some changes. And so that's what, that was their, that was their rationalization for having the drastic selection of maps.
Like status quo is in last and everything?
And, and, and yes, you're exactly right.
They're like, okay, we've. Mr. Chairman. Education, so let's.
You're exactly right. So we've always had these congressional districts or these maps, or even, even the state and the senate positions, we've always had them this, like this, and we're last. So we probably need to make some drastic changes to do that. And, and, and I'm, and I'm not paraphrasing, I'm paraphrasing, but that's exactly what was said in the, in the committees.
Not to, I'm really not trying to be snarky, but we've been controlled by Democrats for a hundred years, so we're gonna change those maps to be more controlled? Is that, is that, I, I, this is a genuine question, I'm not trying to, trying to.
And your, and your points were all taken, Commissioner Henry, but I thought one of the interesting statements that was made in opposition to those maps is all of the representatives for each one of those districts could come out of Albuquerque, okay? But the other argument was they could all come from other places that represented Albuquerque. So I think that's a two-edged sword, which we kind of know who's holding the sword, but at the same time, that was a argument in, on the other side in, in looking at it that way, even though they could all come from Albuquerque because it's so drastic and it reaches to all parts of the state. One of the, one of the people on the committee said, all of my representatives could be from out of Albuquerque, too.
I guess my question is, are they looking to, across the board, balance anything, or are they just changing our districts?
There are other cities that are being separated and other counties that are being divided in that system.
Not just congressional, I'm talking across the board. Are we seeing Albuquerque do some interesting things to get a, change a senate district or a house district up there?
They are, but it's a lot of population jockeying in those districts. So there's arguments both ways between South Valley and how it's split up and not, and included also within Albuquerque.
Some of those districts are geographically very small, but have many, many precincts in the.
Albuquerque's new district.
So one of, one of the things that we have seen within the senate, senate districts, which I wanted to bring out, was the fact that in every option they're considering or passing forward, okay, Eddy County pretty much stays whole, with the exception of splitting out Artesia North. So every one of those selections that they're pushing forward to the legislature for consideration, Eddy County is not split like it was before, with the exception of Artesia going north into that, into that senate district. Today will be the house considerations at three o'clock for the house districts, state house districts, and that is very complicated because they really split that up in several different ways on the maps being considered. But the point I wanted to bring forward is, is if we want to reinforce our support or displeasure of those maps being pushed forward to the special session, there's still an opportunity there to do that. We can't submit new options, but we can submit our support or displeasure for that, and at the same time, in my position, as we're moving forward, is what ears do we need to be speaking to in consideration of the special session, which I think we all know is going to be very challenging when we look at these maps and how they actually push forward and how they're adopted.
Yeah, special sessions early December.
In December.
And that's where it will be finalized?
That's where they'll be finalized. There have already been folks, representatives, and I should say representatives, legislators who have been vocal in the, in the press about the process and what it's looking like and how it might move forward.
Are there gonna be any COVID restrictions at this, or?
We have not heard that there have been. As far as we know today.
The governor's mandate goes through December twelve.
That's right. As far as we know today, the Capitol will be open. I've had numerous legislators tell me on both sides of the aisle that we will have a session that will be open for both, so, but they're also, I mean, I think they have, they're optimistic in that that will happen, but we all know that that has the final say of the governor, so.
You know, in, in showing our support or displeasure for one or the other maps, we also need to communicate that it needs to be open, that there needs to be public involvement for both sides. Everybody needs to be able to speak, and the commission, is it a commission or a committee? I guess it's a committee that's hearing it.
The City District Committee.
This, okay, yeah.
So they're the ones that are providing the three recommended maps to the legislators. The special session will involve all the legislators.
Does this, so that's just the committee, like a standard committee, and then it just moves on to the floor, essentially?
And that committee was formed during the last session, which was to carry out this process of public vetting of all of these. It became very challenging in the fact that a lot of the Native American tribes in Pueblos wanted to see certain configurations within their own, even down to their chapter houses, that wanted an individual voice, and is, I was proud that the committee recognized that you, kind of like the old saying, you just can't make everybody happy in this process and accommodate them without having more districts, and so they did the best they could do. Judge Chavez, who's the chairman of the committee, did actually submit what he called his, his, his option for the map, and it did do a good job of that, with the exception of bringing down that district and taking in Mescalero and across some tortoise.
Once these are approved, how does that work? Let's say that, because I know there's some, some right now that are putting two representatives in the same district and all that, and representatives aren't so bad because it's every two years, but if a senator gets undid, moved, do they get to ride their term out, or do, is now there a special election because, so you can't, you can't push a, push a sitting member out? Okay, good, that's what I was curious about. All right.
But it does make it challenging for the next election.
Oh, yeah, because now.
Because the constituency can totally, basically totally change. I mean, he could be living right on the line in the new.
Well, there were some maps where some of our existing weren't in the.
District.
Weren't in the district.
I remember that talking.
Okay, hope that helps a little bit. All right, thank you, Mitch.
Eric, keep it up and keep bending their ear, because like I said.
We'll do our best.
All right, next item is the tribal request consent agenda.
Any questions or comments on the tribal, tribal request consent agenda? No questions. Entertaining motion that we approve the tribal request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. We don't have any emergency business today. We don't have any legislators in the audience. Elected official comments, announcements, updates. Elected official comments, announcements, updates. None today, thank you. County manager comments. I have just a couple of quick ones. First, I probably need to apologize to the county employees. I just took it for granted that everybody became aware that, they know that Ms. Gay's going to retire as the executive administrative assistant at the end of the year. We went through the process of posting the position, interviewed candidates, and we selected Ms. Tara as, to replace Ms. Gay when, when she retires. So everybody's aware that if things go sideways, it's now Tara's fault.
So congratulations.
Congratulations to Tara. She'll do a great job, and we went through, with HR's help and support, we went through the process of selecting potential candidates. We interviewed for, to replace Tara's administrative assistant. And we interviewed a slate of candidates and made a recommendation, and I think the offer for that has been extended. So hopefully we'll have that individual in place, and we can do some cross-training before Ms. Gay rides off into the sunset, presuming that she's not tied up somewhere. Anyway, I've been talking with Ms. Darlene. We've talked a lot about districting Eddy County, the commissioned districts. That process will take place. We've heard from Mr. Adair this week. He'd been waiting on some data to be released from the state. He expects to have first pass at the commissioned district maps late of the first week of November. The process will be that we'll get to review those recommendations, we'll have discussion, we'll need to have some public hearings, depending on changes, if there are any. There will be some because we have new districts, right, or new precincts.
Correct.
So there'll be some shifting to balance things up. But anyway, first week of November, probably, I think it'll be after the commission meeting. He said he hoped to have something by the third or fourth. So we'll, we'll get those out to share as soon as they're available. The other thing, just a quick report. Since the first of the month, we've been having the vaccination clinics at the Walter Gerald's. We've worked hard to keep DOH on task. Our local DOH folks are awesome, Ms. Susan and folks with her, we've had support from the National Guard. But we've provided between 800 and 1,000 vaccinations to the spectrum, first, first dose, second dose, and booster doses. The last two, we've done 285 and 2, 294. So I mean, we've, it's been good. So we're gonna continue that as long as we can for those that want to, want to receive a vaccination. It's, it's interesting, there are some folks who have been reluctant in the, in the past, but now, I think because of some terms of their employment, different things, school, teenagers, you know. So there's a wide variety of folks that are, so we'll continue to provide that service. We're working on trying to provide testing availability. And MDOH has kind of pulled the horns back a little bit on that to where you could go get tested, which is curious to us, but we, we're having ongoing discussions, and we're trying to find ways that the county can help provide that service within, within the county for all of the citizens that they need to get a, a test. That's probably enough for today. We've, we've had lots of good discussions, so. Next item, any questions?
Are you doing flu shots, Jim?
The county, county did flu shots two weeks ago. So if, yeah, we, we provided them to employees and their families who wanted it. If there are employees who still may want it, they need to reach out to Ms. Charlie or Ms. Roxanne, and we'll see what we can do if we need to organize one more. I think we had Danny come and do it from Southwest Pharmacy for us, so. Yeah. So. Anything else? All right. County commission, comments, announcements, and updates.
Commissioner Carlson? I don't really have anything. Just noticed in the morning, this morning paper, they're attacking the oil and gas industry again. I hate to see that because it is so important to our community and, and our county. And it just, you know, we're sending a bad message.
I have none.
I had the pleasure of meeting with Commander Leos and Bobby Sullivan at the task force a few weeks ago, and really enjoyed the information that they shared. They're working so hard on behalf of our community. And I was able to get a sense of the numbers of how much narcotics are being seized in Eddy County, and I saw it firsthand. So just to put that in perspective, we increased in narcotic seizures 1,600% from 2019 to 2021. We went from hundreds of pills to 29,000 fentanyl pill seizures in two years. So I just want to encourage everybody to realize that it's a real problem here. Talk to your teenagers, advise people away from any kind of drug out there. You just don't know what's in there. So I just want to commend them, and I just want to just recognize them, and they work very hard, and they have a difficult job, and we just need to keep them in our prayers that they stay safe out there. Thank you.
I don't either. There's nothing to make of that, so.
I'll write that down. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your engagement, your embalment. We don't have a need for an executive session today. That leaves item number 16 adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Add a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.